Okay, good evening, everybody. This is a special meeting of the Library Building Committee. It's Wednesday, December 18th. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:10 PM. And we do have a quorum. We have a special agenda tonight, so we are only going to cover those items on the agenda. We can't discuss anything else. The special topics are urgent proposals and change orders. And we're going to start with Anthony from Downs Construction. Anthony, go ahead.
What's going on, everybody? Hopefully you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Let me, um, let me pull up, let me pull up my screen.
Need me to bring it up? I've got it loaded.
No, I made a couple revisions since then. All right, so what I wanted to do is go over reintroducing the Wagner railing system to the plaza.
I'm sorry, Anthony. Are you gonna share? Are you sharing? Oh, okay, perfect.
I was just talking as I was getting there.
Ah, got it.
Just to kind of facilitate it.
All right, sorry about that.
So basically, what happened was, everybody knows the history of the VE process on the project. We tried to go with an initial savings of the Wagner railing system. It was a $40,000 credit with LP Gates, who is our Miss Metal subcontractor, providing a detail that was in the VE PR ASI that was issued way back when. During the submittal process, shop drawing process and conversations with our MWBE Miss Metal subcontractor, it was reviewed that with them that they couldn't create the same detail and the same look that Wagner was going to provide us originally in the contract documents. Going back and forth with them not being able to fabricate this type of rail. It was conversations with the team at our owner's meeting the other day to reintroduce the Wagner lit in-rail system back into the project. So we want to advise the committee tonight about that process and see if we would be able to provide the intended design of the Wagner system back into the plaza. Obviously, this is the main focal point of the building as you're walking by. I think the high-quality product of the Wagner system would be received better by our design team as well as the town. So just a financial summary of this, how this change order went in the VE process. We got the description from Wagner, from Custom Electric, who was supplying the Wagner rail, a credit of $40,000 and LP Gates for an ad of what they thought they would be able to do as far as an installation of a new handrail. The subcontractor, you know, going through the vetting process originally thought that it was just gonna be a sketch 40 pipe with some posts and a light would be basically attached to it, which we reviewed with Jeff way back during the submittal process. We showed him the detail that was incorporated in the VE process, SK07, I believe it was. And it was typical of what you would see for the Wagner system. And he came back and said, "There's no way I could fabricate this." So basically, what we're proposing tonight is a Wagner railing ad, let's say of $90,000, which is a rough order of magnitude to get us going as we still dissect the scope of work, as we vet pricing proposals and change order pricing that's going to be coming in from Custom Electric. We would be apply that $14,488 from our Miss Metal subcontractor not have to fabricate sketch 40 pipe railings in the front plaza there. And this would be all drawn down by RCM contingency, which is in surplus of $800,000, which would be a total net cost to the project of $0, a way we could institute these railings back into the project. Now, with that being said, as we still go and vet this scope of work, pricing submissions and conference calls with Wagner and our electrician, we'd like to get approval for an amount of $14,500 tonight. And that's included in the $90,000 Wagner railing ad to release shop drawings so we could start this process due to lead times. It's about a four-week process for them to draft up shop drawings for review and approval. Once that's done, we need to field measure the plaza once all that concrete's poured. But the saving grace to all this is when we started the infrastructure and the pathway of the electrical components that are required at the plaza, we did hedge our bet a little bit and installed the provisions for electrical within the concrete foundation walls that were poured with the most stringent requirement, which would be this Wagner railing system. But we're looking for approval conditionally on $14,500 to start the shop drawing process to mitigate lead times moving forward. But the end of the day, the rough order of magnitude would be 90,000 at this point in time, less the $14,488, which comes out, a total contingency, a CEM contingency, construction contingency draw of $75,512. Right now, that number is due to fluctuate as we're still in trying to negotiate this down and doing our best effort to make sure we come up with the correct scope of work with our two subcontractors involved.
So moved.
Okay, we have, you're making a motion, Bob Ike.
Yes, sir, I'm making a motion based upon the presentation just presented.
Okay, so we would release $14,500 for the release of shop drawings for the Wagner rail system through Custom Electric and Wagner.
Correct.
I think Jesse White seconded. Okay, let's have discussion. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay, wait, Lois had her hand up first. Lois?
You say that the total will fluctuate. Can you give me an idea of how high that could fluctuate?
I don't know at this point in time. Right now, we do have a proposal from the Wagner railing company for the lit handrails. So there's a couple of conditions going on at the plaza, Lois. There's 70% of the rails up there are LED lit handrails from Wagner. And there's two other sets of handrails, one along the ramp, along the planter side, and one on the stair that is not lit, does not have a lighting or LED light fixture involved in the railing. Right now, I'm trying to vet out the scope of work through Custom Electric that, hey, you did price and you gave us a cost here for, you know, the lit LED railings, but we're still missing the one at the stair and the other side of the ramp. Now, you know, project-wise, we're not gonna have our Miss Metals fabricator fabricate a different railing system just because it doesn't have an LED in it. And I think Jeff would agree that both of those types of products, the one that has the LED light incorporated into it and the one that doesn't, needs to both be Wagner for that reason. We need to keep everything, you know, on the same aesthetic look. We note that these rails on the exterior here, the only one that is offered that has an LED light isn't in aluminum. It's not going to get painted. It's actually type 304 stainless steel, which is a fantastic product. Jeff, I don't know if you have anything to elaborate on anything that I just said or misspoke on anything, but I think being as transparent as possible, this is the condition that we're faced with. And again...
Yeah, I think, I think my concern, Anthony, from the get-go was with the Wagner system, it was all-inclusive and only one trade will actually be erecting that, putting it together. And they have the expertise to do it. I think once we wanted to save money and got that sketch out for some value assuring, it feels like the sub wasn't really seeing what the full intention was for his scope. So, you know, it would have been a fully custom rail. So I'm kind of happy that we're going back to the Wagner, but I'd like to know the original bid. Are we within the same price range of originally or is it less now?
Well, you know, that Custom Wagner railing, that credit of $40,000 included some additional labor and as well as the new light fixture that was going into the custom fabricated piece by Bolivar. But with that being said, is I still have to digest some of the numbers, Jeff, coming in to make sure we get a full scope of work over there?
Yeah, and I would like to, Jeff, I could just interject real quick.
Let's finish, Scott. Let's just talk about that a little further because I know you mentioned 70% of the rails were lit. But I think there's two ramp handrails, so one of those is lit, so that's half. And then the rails on the plaza, there's every other one, correct?
Yeah, there's two, two out of the three, Jeff, on the stairs are lit.
Okay.
Jeff, I just want to be clear about your comment earlier that when the project was bid with the original Wagner rail, that it was always gonna be put together and provided by one trade. That actually is not true. We always had it scoped out where the electrician was purchasing the railing because it was in the light fixture specification. However, there were RFIs that came in during the bid stating that the electricians do not, they do not install metal handrails, even if it's considered a light fixture. So we actually had to put out an addendum to coordinate with the miscellaneous metal subcontractor to facilitate the installation. So I want to make that clear, that there were always two subs involved when the Wagner railing was something that was gonna be part of the project.
During the bid, right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah.
I understand that there's a complicated history.
There is.
But what I'm anxious to know is what are we doing by approving this now in terms of any constraints on the total amount that this is gonna cost in the end? I mean, you haven't given me any kind of idea whether it's 90,000 or 110,000 or 70,000.
Yeah, so Lois, what we've done is I've asked Anthony to provide an order of magnitude in the worst-case scenario tonight of what it is to buy this product and install it based on the fact that we don't have credits settled out yet. And Anthony, correct me, but I believe your $90,000 there is your order of magnitude budget for this Wagner railing, correct?
That's what I got, but we had to go back to the drawing board the other day, yesterday or this morning, I should say, to talk about the railing system that does not get the LED fixture within it. And it still needs to be a Wagner product to keep everything on a consistent...
Yeah, but isn't that included in this $90,000 budget or is it not?
It is not included in there. I'm waiting to get that number in from Custom Electric.
All right, then I would suggest for tonight that based on the motion for the $14,500 to get shop drawings going, that that is the action for tonight until we can settle out.
And that's, and that's, right, exactly. And Scott, that's why I said it the way I did is because I'm looking for approval to get the shop drawings, the long lead portion of this work going when I actually facilitate a hard number from Custom and negotiation with them as well as LP Gates. But I just wanted to show kind of what I was thinking of how the money situation was going to be broken down.
Yeah, so the one railing you're waiting on is for the five-foot railing?
It's the one at the stair and it's the long one that gets attached to the planter wall of the ramp, which is not lit.
Okay.
All right, let me just, can I just say something? The Wagner system, it's the same exact rail system, only one has an integrated light fixture. And if there's no light fixture, then it's a cover that goes on there. There's no change in diameter, no change in quality, no change in details, anything. So I'm kind of surprised at the 90,000, but we've already voted. Let's move this forward, let's go forward with it. But I want to see these numbers, Anthony. We should have an offline discussion and go through it thoroughly.
Yeah, this is Bob Ike. This is Bob Ike. When I made that motion, I was only making it for the 14 and change, nothing more. If anything more is needed, you gotta come back to the committee to get approval for that.
I agree.
I understand Anthony was giving the overall picture, but my motion is strict for the 14,000 and change.
Correct.
Right, you're right, Bob. Thank you for clarifying that. All we're approving tonight is the 14.5 to do the shop drawings that are needed for the Wagner rail system. Anthony will go through the regular process that we followed all along on the project. And he will come back to the LBC with a regular change control once he finalizes all of the money for the ads, the credits and the ads.
Correct, correct, Patrick. And that's all gonna be a drawdown from our construction contingency.
Right. And the cost to the project right now is zero and will continue...
It would be zero, correct.
Okay, Joe has something? Go ahead, Joe.
One other quick question. If, if we're only looking at the 14.5 and you still don't have a firm number, then why was the number changed from the original submittal of 87,142 to 90K?
I think it was 80, it might have been 87, Joe, I think.
Yeah, it was 87,142.
Yeah, 87,142.
Yeah, I was, yeah, because I was trying to just show some numbers here today. You know, worst-case scenario, maybe, hopefully. But I need to see what those steel numbers come in at, stainless steel numbers come in at for the non-lit handrail section of this plaza. So there was an RFI response, Joe, a couple of weeks ago regarding on how to move forward. The architectural drawings showed, you know, both sets of handrails to be lit. We do have electrical site work drawing that shows otherwise. So we asked an RFI of how we should proceed. And it was referenced back to follow ES 101, which is the site electrical plan, which showed the north side of the ramp lit. The railing attached to the planter on the south of the ramp, not lit. And two out of the three handrails at the stairs to be lit with the LED system. So.
Okay. Any other discussion before we take our vote? Joe, I can't see the screen, so is there anybody who...
Other question is right now being...
Okay, okay. Then we've had a motion, a second, we've had discussion. I believe we're now ready to vote on this. All those in favor of the motion, please respond with aye.
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 And the vice chair votes aye, so motion passes. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, Glenn, you are up next with your change order.
All right, I've got a proposal here.
Then you want me to bring it up or you got it?
Yeah, if you could share the screen for Stafford Mechanical, their proposal for $4,500. And then I threw something together. I'll share my screen after everyone has an opportunity to look at that.
Got it.
All right, so from Stafford Mechanical, this is for return duct modifications over the central circulation area. So it reads to supply and install all labor and material to install five returns with five new two-by-two ceiling return grills and 14-inch R8 flex ducts. So this will eliminate the plenum ceiling as discussed with the building inspector. So what does that mean? Let me share my screen real quick if I could. Okay, so this, can everyone see that?
Yes, sir.
Yep, this was the inspection report from our building official, Dwight Carlson. So he failed the above-ceiling inspection due to cables not approved for plenum ceilings. There's condensate lines, there's other BX, older electrical cables above the ceiling that are not plenum return. So what does that mean? Essentially, you've got the layout of the floor plan right here. All the green circles could represent supply grills, right? You've got the conditioned air from the rooftop unit coming down, following the red arrows, and they come back through the ceiling over the central circulation area. These are open grills right now. So what happens is when that air comes above the ceiling, it can go wherever it wants, right? It can fill the ceiling with air and then eventually it's drawn back through the return plenum. And it goes back up to the roof and it comes back down through the supply lines. You've got many cables, you've got different materials up here that do not have a suitable jacket. It's just a rating on the plenum cables, electrical and so forth. It's not rated for air to be passing by it and then returning to your system. The workaround essentially is to get rid of these open panels in the ceiling. And then we're going to flex duct back to the unit, right? So no air is gonna be free to fill up the ceiling space and share that same space with non-plenum rated cables. Essentially, we're gonna have five of these flex ducts come back up through the ceiling and be branched into the air handling unit. So it's been sized out. We've got five 14-inch diameter flex ducts to make up that volume. So everything that's coming off of the supply is coming back up in five different areas now, going back up to the rooftop unit to meet code compliance for the building official. And so Stafford's request is $4,500 for all materials, labor, installation and modification of the existing ductwork to meet code compliance.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Motion second, discussion, open for discussion. Anyone have any comments, questions?
I appreciate the explanation.
Yeah, me too.
I was thinking of you, Lois. I was ready for you.
Hey, Glenn, what does this do to your bottom-line budget? Where's this 45 coming from, 4,500?
Sure, let me pull that up for you real quick. Go back. So what that means for us right now, we've gone through our construction budget, right? Right now, we're into our contingency. We've got $19,200 set for the lease extension at the atrium. This would bring us now, out of that $4,500, we've got $3,767 going into contingency right now. So that's $77,330 plus the Eversource rebate brings it to just under $100,000 on top of what we already have for placeholders for technology, the $75,000 in landscaping and $100,000 for the main entrance canopies. Keep in mind, going forward, I will have a few small change orders, just like the electrical to accommodate the lighting for the canopies and also a circuit running for the biblioteca book lockers that requires its own designated power and ethernet connection. And the building signage, the LED draw, which is very minimal, will also be on its own circuit for the front exterior signage. In addition to the footings, Millennium Builders, when I met with Jeff Brown to go over the installation of those footings for the canopy, they did say that, you know, we can't save the sidewalk. There's gonna be too much damage when they put those footings in. So we'll have probably four squares of sidewalk that need to be replaced on the east entrance and the same amount at the west entrance. So I've got to get those costs along with a poured slab to accommodate the book locker unit that's going outside of the west entrance. So those are gonna be some costs I'm working on now and I'm hoping to get those figures by January 15th for our next LBC meeting.
Thank you, Glenn. All right. Are there any other questions or concerns? I don't see any hands. Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve $4,500 for Stafford Mechanical Services to make the changes necessary to meet the code compliance for our building, please respond with an aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then I just have one invoice for CSI Ceiling Systems Incorporated.
Okay.
Working on it.
Yep.
Um, did you want to talk about the quotations that, oh, no, that's for Chris, right?
Yes.
All right, here's your CSI.
Okay, so this, the remaining ceiling grid and acoustic panels for the drop ceiling have been installed at this time in-house. Once this ductwork modification is done, my guys will put in the tiles over the circulation area. Everything else is in place, the work has been completed. I just have to modify the ductwork and then we'll set those remaining ceiling tiles in place. So CSI has completed their portion of the work and is billing us for the remaining amount of $8,337.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions on this invoice? This is the last payment for them, right, Glenn?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you.
All right, that's all I have for my portion this evening. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Glenn, very much. Have a good night. You're gonna stay on, I guess.
Yes, I'll stay on.
Okay. Okay, so next up on our agenda, Chris, you're gonna talk about some technical stuff.
Sure, all right, so we'll start with Sensource. Sensource is our people counters. There's gonna be two people counter devices in each vestibule. These match the people counters that were chosen by D'Agostino for the Proster project, which is obviously what we want because it's all cloud-based. We can get real-time data of how many people are in the buildings. So this quote is for $3,199.80. It includes labor as well because these are very particular when you mount them and we want to make sure they're mounted properly to get the best possible count.
So moved.
Seconds. So we have a second by Lois. Any discussion?
Yes.
Bob?
Thank you, Mrs. Vice Chair. I noticed in here there's annual data hosting service fee.
Correct.
Can the project pay for that? That has to be outside of the project.
That I'm not sure. I wasn't sure on that because it's essential to being able to use these devices. We would obviously pay for it in the second year. It is an annual fee. We could take that out without that. If we think that's best, it would be $2,748.80.
Accepted, amendment accepted.
All right, well, the library can do that, then.
Okay, duh.
Okay. Yeah, I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Yeah, I mean, shouldn't that be part of the normal budget for the library's ongoing needs? And...
Yeah, it will be in the future, so that makes sense. That's why I was prepared for that if that was the case. So I just wanted to...
Okay, so just to make sure, so you're taking the total amount of $31,998 minus the $2,900?
Actually, $4,51, I think it is.
Oh, $4,51?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, with everything included, $4,51.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
What now?
So the new number? 27, 48 and what?
80 cents.
80, okay.
Is this off of a state contract, Chris?
It is, yep. I should have said that, sorry.
I don't have to ask my next question then.
Okay, so motion was made, friendly amendment was accepted by the motioner. We had a second, I think, by Bob?
Lois.
Or Lois, Lois seconded? Okay, thank you, thank you. Are there, is there any further discussion before we vote?
Just wanted confirmation about this for all because there's going to be a lot of technology where this comes into play. Is that how it works where it falls into the library budget as opposed to the project budget for all of the times this is gonna happen with the upfront costs?
Anytime that there is an annual subscription fee to cost to continue going, unless it is part of the actual cost of the item and it is not a recurring fee such as when the laptops were purchased and they had an automatic warranty and assist that was built into the price of the unit. It's not separable, okay? Anytime there's a separate cost for an annual fee that has to come from an operating budget as opposed to the building budget. Doesn't matter what it's for, for any, anything.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that, Joe. It's a good explanation of what to look for next time.
No problem, glad to help. Do you want to go to the CDWG next?
Yeah, so CDWG...
We got it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you gotta vote, yeah.
Sorry, that's okay, that's okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Onto the next one, Joe, which is what?
Yeah, this is CDWG. We buy...
Yeah, this is CDWG. We we buy from them a lot. It's all state contract pricing. Um this is kind of the first wave of our AV package for um for McMahon. The second wave will be on January fifteenth. This is the display screens, the large eighty-five inch uh screen that's going to be for the main flexible space. A fifty-five inch screen that is for marketing, the the bright sign um signage player, which is for marketing and then the mount, the mounting uh devices for the for for both screens. Again, these match the recommendations from D'Agostino for Prosser, so um they are, you know, the the again, we're trying to get consistency across buildings and the total for this is six thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
Thank you. We have a second and a motion. Is there any discussion or questions on this?
Question.
Bob?
Yeah, Chris, you you reduced the sixty-five sixty-five inch original proposal down to fifty-five?
Correct, Bob, yeah. The, you know, the, we're putting them on those brick pillars at McMahon and and the sixty-five was too big. So we got, we went to fifty-five.
That's fine.
Lois?
When you speak of marketing, are you talking about advertising what programs are available or?
Oh, yes, yes. Uh, library programs, whatever we want to put on the screen, that's for the library. No uh, no Coca-Cola or anything, so.
That's good. Any, any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, I think we're ready. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Next, Chris.
What do we got next, Joe? Okay, all learning.
AWE?
Yeah, uh, they're um, these are special um computers and tablets for children. They have uh unique software that you can only get through this company. Uh, it's a, it's very common in in public libraries. We've had the machines in the past but we hadn't updated them in a long time, so we want to have new ones for the new buildings. These are two tablets because we didn't have quite as much space for um computers at McMahon. We do have some two regular children's computers and then these two tablets um with this unique software. It also includes um the um bumper to protect them as well as a damage uh warranty uh for two years, because you know, anything can happen with a screen breaking or something of that nature. The uh total is six thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and I was, I was actually pleased because I've been getting quotes from them and this was the best pricing I've uh I've gotten from them, so.
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Any discussion on this one? So Chris, I take it this is also a state contract, yeah?
This actually is not, so I don't, um I don't, this is not state contract, um, but
I need two other bids.
Oh, I thought it was had to be seventy-five hundred, I'm sorry.
Oh, seventy-five hundred, that means it goes out for RFP.
Does it have to be? Product, there is no other product like it. That's comparable. This is like special specialty software just for children, uh educational.
It's a unique item that's unavailable anywhere else?
Correct, yeah, it's their own software um that they that they put on these machines. Um there there really isn't a comparable uh product. Probably why they do pretty well with libraries still. And Joe, I just want to confirm, um, it is at seventy-five hundred dollars that we then have to gather three uh, three proposals. That's what I was, that's what I was told, but I
All right, so we're, wait, hang on, somebody's got their hands up, I can't tell who. Who has their hand up? I can't see.
I don't see anybody um on Zoom.
Okay, I had somebody had a hand up. Somebody might have hit a button, it's gone now. Um, all right, um it's a unique item. It falls into that category of okay.
I definitely would say it is and I, this is something I can't even off the top of my head think of anything.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Yes, this is a unique library item, one of a kind.
Okay, then it sounds like we could move forward on this one without getting two more quotes. Anybody have anything else? We do have a motion and a second, yes, Bob second. Okay, all those in favor of the AWE specialty software needed for McMahon in the amount of six thousand five hundred seventeen dollars, please respond by saying aye. Aye, motion passes. Thank you.
You, and I think all that's left is an invoice.
Yeah, is it Dell?
Yeah, it's a Dell invoice. They're very confusing the way they do it and I apologize for that. If you go to the middle of the invoice, I don't know why they do it like this. Uh, go up a little bit, Joe, uh toward the first page, actually, toward the bottom of the first page. There it is. Um that's the total, thirteen, which which you've already approved as part of the quote. Um, actually, you proved higher because they came in with a little better pricing after afterwards. It's thirteen thousand six hundred and eleven and twenty-two cents. This was for fourteen PCs. The reason they split it, because I was trying to figure it out for a minute myself, is the top is like the very base PC, just you know, the actual base of the pro- base product. And then in the bottom, it's when you've kind of upgraded a little bit, is how they do it, like the hard drive and the um memory. And then they price that out separately. So the whole total is thirteen six one one twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Bob, Bob and Bob. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, and Chris, you said this was already approved as part of the reg, the uh original budget, right?
Correct, the quote, the quote was
Right, this is just the invoice.
Quote higher?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we got it, Chris said it was reduced, yeah.
Yeah, the quote is higher. Is there something I need to do to, for that?
Nope.
Okay.
Only saved us money. All right, all those in favor, please respond. Aye, motion passes. Thank you all. Anything else, Chris?
No, that's it. Um, I do plan to have two, my final tech packages by hopefully January, with the January fifteenth meeting. One of them working with the IT department on, we're going to have, that's going to be the network switch um and access point package as well as the labor involved with that. Uh, I do think our budget will be good on that though, and then the other is additional AV, so that will be at the next meeting.
At the LBC?
Yeah, next LBC, yeah.
Okay, which will be January fifteenth. Okay, so what about Prosser? You did, is is that started yet?
Yeah, I have, I have
Never mind, can't ask about that. Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry. All right, so that is it for Chris. So the next item is approval of invoices. Joe, I'll turn that over to you.
Alrighty, we have invoice from Colliers for November amounting to eighty-five eighty-two point two-five.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on this item? Sean, anything from you? Okay. All right, uh, anybody have their hands up? All right, all those in favor of approving the Colliers invoice, eight thousand five eighty-two point two-five?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you.
And we also have a late submittal from TSMT uh for the fireproofing inspections of three oh four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is for three hundred and
Jesse, you were the second?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
And this is for three hundred and four dollars for fireproofing inspection. Anyone have any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye, motion passes. Thank you. All right, uh, that completes all of our agenda items. Our next meeting is January fifteenth and it will be twenty twenty-five. I know, hard to believe. And then there's another meeting, of course, on the twenty-ninth. At this time, I'd like to open for public comment. Anybody out there, Joe? Okay, any members of the committee wish to comment? Oh, it's not, not on the agenda, right?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All right, meeting ends at six fifty. Thank you all. Thank you so much for joining this special meeting. Appreciate it.
Have a great holiday, everyone. Be safe.
Happy holidays.
Holidays.
Thanks for conducting.
Not a problem. Sorry I brought up the Prosser there. I forgot we were on a controlled agenda.